Local planning agency, planning commission meeting, 6:00 PM on Monday, August 13th, 2018. And we call this meeting to order. And we will wait for Gwen to take the roll.
Thank you. Commissioner Klyet?
Here.
Second Vice Chair Wykoff?
Here.
Commissioner Hearn?
Here.
Commissioner Rappa?
Here.
First Vice Chair Belaski, she is out of town, so she will not be attending tonight. Chairman Noble?
Here. And now we move on to number three, approval of the minutes from the June 11th, 2018 meeting. Anybody have any changes to the minutes?
I move we accept the minutes as presented.
I'll second it.
And can we take the vote?
Sure. Commissioner Rappa?
Yes.
Second Vice Chair Wykoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Klyet?
Yes.
Commissioner Hearn?
Yes.
Chairman Noble?
Yes. And now on to agenda number four, new business. A, to consider a special exemption for use for property located at 850 Baypoint Drive. The applicant is seeking to install an amateur radio antenna under Madeira Beach Land Development Regulations, Chapter 110, Article 5, Division 2, R-12, Single Family Residential District, Section 110-179, Special Exemption Uses. Four, amateur marine radio antennas not exceeding 50 feet. And do we have a presentation from the city, or?
Yes, thank you. This is, there we go. This is a request for, as you said, an amateur radio antenna. We are kind of limited because there are state laws allowing and kind of facilitating the use of amateur radio. And we do have requirements in our code that require you to review it for purposes of basically safety. And it specifies a tower height. If this were to want needed to go over that height, we probably would need to have allowed that as long as they could show what they're, how the need existed. But basically what we'll be looking for here is just to ensure that it meets the setback requirements or that it's safely anchored. In this case, as you see in your packet, they provided us not only the licensing to show that they were able to, that they were protected by state law because the state law only protects those that are actually licensed. So the gentleman did provide me with his license and a whole lot of background information that was also included in your packet. And then as you can see on your, I don't know if you can tell looking on your site, but I'm circling up there above your heads. This is the location where the tower would be and it would be tucked into this little notch in the house. So from the front of the house, you wouldn't even see it. And then it would just blend in with the structure of the house, basically. It's not a particularly high tower and so it shouldn't pose any problem for anyone. And as long as it's anchored, they did provide us with specifications on how it would be anchored and it's well planned. And so the staff has recommended approval.
Do we have any, is the applicant here would like to speak? Or do we have anybody opposed to it from the community? Please say your address and name for the record, sir.
Thomas Shaver, 850 Baypoint Drive. I am the applicant. And I don't actually have anything to add from the material the city provided in the packet. That was quite thorough on the, following the standards that Madeira specifically discussed amateur radio towers in their code, so following the standards for to go through the special exemption process.
And just for clarification, this is one of those approvals that has to go both here and then to the special magistrate. I'm not sure why, but maybe we'll deal with that later in the code. It's one of those things we may want to fix. But what you'll be doing is making a recommendation and then it would proceed to the magistrate.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Speak on behalf or against? I mean, the packet looks pretty thorough. The plans look really nice. It's a nice construction going on there. Everybody's been watching that project going on. It's pretty interesting. So do we have anybody, commission have any questions? Get someone to have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the applicant's petition for the special exception use for the property located at 850 Baypoint Drive.
I'll second the motion.
And the vote?
Commissioner Hearn?
Yes.
Second Vice Chair Wykoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Klyet?
Yes.
Commissioner, I'm sorry. Chairman, I'm sorry, I'm missing, I'm sorry, miss. Commissioner Klyet?
Yes.
I'm missing somebody. I'm sorry. Commissioner Rappa?
Yes.
And Chairman Noble?
Yes. On to new business. B, to consider a redevelopment for property located at 13525 First Street East. The applicant is seeking to replace existing single-story home with a 1,296 square foot with FEMA compliant multi-story home with a 1,273 square foot footprint under Madeira Beach Land Development Regulations, Section 110-97B, 1-Redevelopment Planning Process, rebuilding regulations for the redevelopment units, single-family. And Linda, do we have a presentation or comments from the city?
You have in your packet some information that I think will help in your deliberations first. You'll see in your packet or on the screen behind you that there, there's a site plan or survey showing the position of the existing structure. And the code provides for the opportunity for people who have on-the-ground older structures to build a new structure in the same footprint, which gives them the opportunity to use their site even if they have non-conformities due to setback encroachments. That is the case here. As you can see, the original house is built almost in, almost on the property line on one side and with very little setback on the other side and not much of a front setback either. But it's a very small oddly shaped lot. It is a legal lot. I double-checked to make sure it was created as a legal lot. And so the non-conformity was basically created by the city. After the lot was created, then the city came back and changed setback requirements and such and the end lot size and that that's what made it non-conforming. So now they are proposing, I'm gonna change your graphic here. Now they are proposing, oops, oops. Further down. Hang on here a second. And I know that the applicant has a representative here who would talk more about the exact details, but I want to give you the site plan. Okay. So we do have behind you the site plan. You can see that the, where the little cars are graphicked into the garage. That would be the lower floor and that's the footprint. They have pulled the new house further away from that side setback. And basically they're within the footprint of the old house but have made it a bit smaller. And then the stairs, the external stairs to the second floor will land in the same spot that the old rear entrance of the house landed. So the footprint, this house has been within the footprint of the old one, but it's slightly small, smaller. It's pulled back a bit. So it should help actually make the lot a little bit safer. There's a little more space between the two structures now.
So this, the old one, it was basically right on the line?
It was right on.
And now we're going five feet off the line?
Correct.
Nice, okay.
Yes. And I think that the architect is, designers here for the house and would be able to answer any specific questions. It does meet the height requirements and other conditions. Of course, will meet the building code and because it's up off the ground, everything of course has to meet floodplain ordinance. So it'll be up off the ground with the flood openings and all such things. It will be able to be approved entirely through staff review because it's a single-family home. They have worked closely with the neighbors since this is so close to the neighbors and they're supportive.
I bet they are.
Yes.
So what setbacks would they not be in code with?
Yeah, they really don't have a requirement to meet code because the old footprint didn't meet code. I think the front setback is a little bit short still. It's got 10 feet. Yeah. Let me see here. The front setback, front setback is 10 instead of the 20 that would be normal. The rear setback is fine. The sides are actually compliant at this point. So it's mainly a front setback issue.
But that's really a different, if you will, space over there because
Oh, yes.
First Street East is not a paved street there. It's more their driveway than anything else.
Correct.
It's not something that anybody's traversing on a regular basis.
Right. Yes, so there's a lot of front space there between.
Because it looks as though, you know, from the casual observer, that that's all their front yard. Because I'm very familiar with this house. I think I sold it a couple of years, several years ago to the people that have it now. So, or my office did. But yeah, it's a totally, this is almost a, gives it a bad view almost for those of you looking at it because this road where it says First Street East is not in fact a road. It's just grass at this point. So I don't think it really encroaches on anybody, even though they're not required to meet setback. But if you're noodling that, it doesn't really seem to apply because there's nothing in front of them.
That's right.
For a long way till that other three, that three-unit building that's over there on the other side of that right away.
Correct. So the staff has recommended approval.
Do we have anybody here to speak? The applicant care to speak? Please state your name and address.
I'm Jody Beck from Traction Architecture in Tampa, 2710 North Dundee Street. If you want to put up the site photos, we can see that condition that the commissioner was talking about. That, yeah. So if you, right, if you can see that. So it's an incredibly unusual lot and house. And the nice things about it are, you know, its proximity to all this water, but it's a challenging lot and it's oddly shaped. And as the commissioner pointed out, the front setback, oh, perfect. It's not the typical condition where you have a street running in front of it. So it's, the front of it is actually this, I guess it's a city easement in that area. So it's kind of interesting. But the owners, Mercy Roeburg and Scott Lance, they came to us with this house that they loved, actually. If they could have, you know, kept this house and renovated it and made it into, you know, something new. They like small spaces. They're into sort of efficient living and things like that. They would have done that. But, you know, in our experience with doing a lot of coastal homes, these houses with the 50% rule, the FEMA requirements, it just does not make sense. And it's, it's not really possible to pour the amount of money needed to really rehabilitate them into them without going over the 50% of the value. And so the project is always better served in these circumstances by just building a new code compliant home. And that's exactly what we're doing. So they didn't come to us trying to maximize the space but to just do something really sensitive to their views and their land and their neighbors. And even though we have a really tight footprint, we actually made it even tighter for ourselves just because we wanted to add that space between the applicant's house and the neighbor's house and just give a little bit more breathing room there. So we ended up with an even smaller footprint and, oh, I can do this. See what else I have. So this is just some more views of the existing house there. That, you know, it, it's a 1950s concrete block home. It needs a lot of work and it would have been very difficult to rehabilitate it. I mean, it would take years and phases and you'd still end up with a house that was prone to flooding. You can see how close we are to the water there. And I think they were worried during the last hurricane that they would not be coming home to their house. So they gave us a call and said, "We need to fix this." It sure is and it's, it's interesting. So I can just run through the plans real quick. If, I don't know if I can do it with this. Can I change the file?
Oh, you want to go to the other file?
Yeah, just those same drawings you had up. I'll just sort of point out a little bit what we're doing. And you have the copies of them. So on the left lists all the code requirements and the height requirements and the square footages. We're not making this a huge house. It's going to be about 2,000 square feet AC space in there. And we kind, we and the client really liked the idea of just continuing to pull up and be able to see the water. So the bottom isn't even fully enclosed. It'll be an enclosed storage area and then kind of more of a carport. So it's still, it keeps that whole area very open. Can I move it down? Oh, okay, sort of. So the site plan, you can see what's going on with the location of the house relative to the existing footprint, where we've pulled it in about five feet and then kind of held into, within that existing footprint. There's an open staircase in the back that goes up to the front entrance. So the front entrance is sort of a little bit to the back of the house. Again, with this tight site and trying to work in the footprint was really challenging. So we, we had to kind of, you know, work with that and I think we came up with a good solution there. And then, oh, it's like in the middle of the drawings. You can see the, the ground floor plan. I don't know how to go back to the first floor plan. The first floor is just basically a big open living space with a very large outdoor deck. They love, you know, their view and the sight and being outside. And then on the second floor, wow, sorry guys, it's on the bottom of that drawing. I don't know how to shift it. It's just their bedrooms. They have two kids. And so that other little house was really getting quite cramped for them with their, you know, husband, wife, two kids and, and some pets. So they're going to love this new space, more excited. So then we were able to also put a little third floor, not a full third floor, but more of like, there it is up there, a loft space under the, under the attic and a roof deck to really take advantage of the site. So we're excited and they're excited. Here are elevations of the house. And we think that it, you know, treats this little, little lot with the amount of respect that it, that it deserves. And, you know, is really going to make something amazing out of that spot. And I think the neighbor, from what Mercy told me, is thrilled that they're doing this and putting a new house up on that lot. And if you guys have any questions, I'm here.
Any questions from the commission? I think we're pro-redeveloping these odd lots, as you put it, which is, you're spot on with that in Madeira Beach. We've got a lot of small lots with old structures on them and that 50% rule is tough to do. So that little neighborhood right there, that little corner has really improved over the last couple of years. It's nice to see. Mm-hmm. We had the one on the water down, a couple down, brand new.
The little eco village.
The eco village. They even renovated the one next to 711. So anybody else from the community wish to speak? And then let's, anybody have a motion?
I make a motion to move forward with this. Motion to approve.
I second that.
Gwen, may we have the roll for the vote?
Sure. Second Vice Chair Wykoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Hearn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rappa?
Yes.
Commissioner Klyet?
Yes.
Chairman Noble?
Yes.
Do you want these back?
Okay, moving on to new business. C, approval of capital improvements plan as petition CIP 2018-01.
Members of the board, this item that is before you this evening is the fiscal year 2019 capital improvements plan. Consistent with Section 10.3 in the charter, it is the requirement of the city manager to provide a two-year capital improvements plan. But if we look at the ordinance that was adopted prior, well, actually not prior, but an ordinance that was adopted, it requires that the city provide a five-year capital improvements plan. Most agencies effectively do that anyway. We do that. But it is a requirement that at minimum we put together a two-year capital improvements plan. As we've had discussions with the Board of Commissioners as it relates to the capital improvements plan, a lot of the emphasis has been placed on infrastructure, making some infrastructure improvements. We had a analysis done not too long ago, I would say probably about four months ago, looking at the city's pavement management plan as well as some of the stormwater infrastructure. And there are some sizable investments that would need to occur over the next five years for the city of Madeira Beach to be able to address some of the infrastructure concerns. The two roadway projects that are in desperate need of substantial improvements are Parsley Drive and Marguerite Drive. Based on what staff believes our best guesstimate at this particular point, we think that it will cost roughly about $4.5 million to do the improvements necessary for that roadway. And when we look at our roadways, one of the things we want to address is a lot of the stormwater infrastructure. Obviously, being a barrier island and having low topography, we have some issues and some challenges. So you're not looking at just going in there and milling and resurfacing. You're in essence going in there and repairing and replacing your stormwater infrastructure and then making improvements to the roadway. In order for that particular project to come to fruition, it will require a bond issuance for the city to move forward in such an endeavor. Based on the preliminary numbers, when we looked at all our roadway infrastructure, I believe maybe about five to seven years ago, Director Pierce, I think, has the list, we had a preliminary assessment done on all our roadway projects. And had we moved forward with those roadway projects, we would have saved maybe about $13 to $14 million. That's how much construction cost has increased. So one of the things that we want to do as an organization, we want to try to be more proactive versus reactive because we're starting to see a lot of the construction costs increase, especially roadway construction. Most of the roadway construction projects that we're competitively bidding and we're seeing come back are experiencing anywhere between a 10 to 25% increase. Most notably, the resurfacing and the undergrounding of the utilities from 150th to 144th. We've already seen a $250,000 price increase in a span of, what, six or seven months associated with the project. So it is incumbent upon us to make sure that we try to move these projects forward as expeditious as possible. The CIP for fiscal year 2019 calls for a spend of approximately $1.6 million. Attached in the back of the memorandum highlights some of the projects that the city will embark upon. Now, some of these projects, the 137th Avenue Circle improvements, you'll see that there's $285,000 that's budgeted. There is money that is in essence rolling over from fiscal year 2018 and then we're adding monies from fiscal year 2019 to allow for that project to come to fruition. We, we have received monies or an appropriation from SWIFTMUD to the tune of, I think, about $440,000 for that project. But I can tell you, in the short time that I've been with the organization, the cost for that project has increased. And we had a conversation with representatives from the Water Management District. And I said, "Well, is there an opportunity to split the cost difference?" And unfortunately, that wasn't successful for us. But nonetheless, we are going to move forward with that particular project in fiscal year 2019. That project calls for roadway improvements but also addressing the infrastructure issues on the stormwater side. So you're getting money from the Water Management District because you're treating, I believe, 5.2 acres of flow, stormwater flow. Some of the other projects that you'll see is there's monies that are being appropriated to systematically go to every beach access that we have along Gulf Boulevard and make some cosmetic improvements, whether it's milling and resurfacing the parking lots, whether it's making improvements to the landscape, streetscape, and making it a little bit more appealing to our visitors. That's something that we, as a city, have now made a priority, looking at our signage, looking at our beach access, because we benefit exponentially from tourists that come to our area. One of the other projects that the board has supported thus far is about $106,000 investment in John's Pass Village. We are going to be putting together a plan that addresses the pedestrians' experience there, making some improvements, streetscape, landscaping, lighting, wrapping some of the electrical boxes that are out there, just doing more to make that, that tourist hub for us really pop and really encourage people to feel a little bit safer. Because if you go back behind some of the buildings on Pelican Lane or if you're there in the evening, the lighting is something that we think as a city, we can effectively improve. And then some of the pavers that we have because of the natural flow of water and the shifting sands and all that, we are starting to see some issues as far as maintaining ADA compliance. So we're going to make some improvements there, addressing some of our restroom facilities because they are at a state of, they're at the end of their useful life. So there's some improvements that we need to make in our restroom facilities. One of the things that the board recently discussed, and it is in the budget right now, is the transient boat docks. One of the things that staff has advocated prior to my arrival is that having John's Pass as the number one tourist destination here in Pinellas County and having the largest boardwalk on the west coast of Florida, not having the ability to effectively boat there provides for an interesting challenge. Nonetheless, staff has budgeted for, in previous budgets, about $265,000 for the transient boat docks. The plans have already been approved and effectively now it's going to be able to move forward with some of the construction associated with that. One of the things that we did for this particular CIP is when the Deepwater Horizon oil spill occurred. occurred, the city was fortunate to receive an allocation of about $452,000. That money has, in essence, sat in undesignated fund balance for a good portion. And so staff has utilized some of those monies for the purposes of funding some of the capital improvement expenditures. And the reason that we are utilizing that money is because, obviously, with capital expenditures, those are one-time costs that doesn't add reoccurring payment, any reoccurring burden to the general fund. Two, we thought it's good for us to be able to utilize that money to address some of the issues that we have. The monies for John's Pass, being that based on the original allocation from the federal government when they did settle with BP, it was intended to mitigate the impact that the oil spill had on the tourism market. So we thought, well, a good portion of that money should be dedicated for the purposes of funding some improvements in John's Pass. And one of the other projects that we're going to do is wrap the pilings underneath the, the boardwalk. There is, and, and you've, don't quote me on this, but I guess there's this worm that now goes in there and bores through the pilings. And in essence, the exterior of the pilings could effectively look stellar, but that there's no internal components. And so you have some issues where you can have some structural integrity concerns. So what we've decided to do is go out there and mark the pilings and then effectively go out there and wrap that. And the cost for that's about $31,000. So that's one of the projects. But we're utilizing some of the BP monies to effectively do that. This particular complex, city center, the fire station, as well as the rec department, there's not a perpetual care fund. So there's no monies that are set aside for painting, carpet repair, those types of things. So we've utilized, we've put $50,000 in seed money for the purposes of creating that perpetual care fund and then eventually looking to seed that every year because at some point, these buildings are going to need some, some improvements or going to need some things that just as they age are going to need to be addressed. The other thing is that the fire department, when they constructed the fire department, it has a asphalt driveway. And in most situations where you see fire departments, you have a concrete apron that basically takes you all the way to the edge of road because those fire apparatus weigh so much that if you have asphalt, effectively, when they go in and out of that, you're going to start chipping away at the asphalt. And we're starting to see that occur at the fire station. So we have $75,000 to address that. We are, before we utilize that money, we are going to go back to the architect and the engineer and see if there's anything that they could effectively do to cure the issues. But nonetheless, we're putting money aside to, to handle that. And one of the other things that staff has addressed, every year as a city and as a small city, we have about 18 pieces of rolling stock, our vehicles. And so every year, we look to spend, you know, anywhere from 75, maybe to 150, $160,000 in vehicles. So we had the conversations internally about talking to Enterprise. And Enterprise came with a proposal that effectively we can transition our fleet a lot quicker. They help maintain our fleet, they help manage our fleet, and we're able to get better resale value when we look to dispose of our fleet. So instead of us spending roughly about $142,000 to $160,000 in the budget for fiscal year 19, we're effectively going to get the same amount of vehicles, if not more, for probably about anywhere from $30,000 to $40,000. And what will happen is, as we manage the fleet, we will then be able to maximize the, return our investment as far as the resale. Because in our conversations with Enterprise, which was pretty fascinating, is that most, their business is not necessarily predicated just on car rentals exclusively. It actually, they make more money and more profits on the resale of their vehicles. So basically, they acquire a vehicle at a very low cost from the dealer. They have to keep the vehicle for a year and a half before they sell it. So during that year and a half, that's when you and I get to rent it and they generate revenue from that. And then they sell the vehicle sometimes for more than what they purchased. So what they will do is they will assist us with managing our fleet. We will hold vehicles for about four years, but when we go to resell it, they actually will compare it to other government entities and what the resale value is, and they'll help us dispose of that asset. And there is a curb that the American Public Works Association said is that if you keep a vehicle too long, it costs you more to maintain it than buy a new vehicle. Because some vehicles we have in the fleet that you'll see are from 1994, 1987, the fuel consumption on those vehicles, as a Ford Ranger, now consume more fuel than an F-150 because of just the age of the vehicle. So we're looking to do different things to effectively modernize and transition our fleet. And what we'll do is if we're going to spend $30,000 this year and we've already set aside $140,000, we just break that up over a couple of years to effectively pay the payment for the lease program and we'll be able to have more modern vehicles in our fleet. So be able to address the needs and the demands of the community as well as making sure that our staff has the appropriate tools to do their job. We have also, this board may be aware of, hired a public information specialist, and this individual is helping us work on our design and marketing collateral. But also, one of the things that is applicable to the CIP that they'll be helping on is our community signage and our signage at our beach access and our entrance sign to make sure there's uniformity and consistency. Similar to that, if you look at Treasure Island Beach Access, you know which accesses are handicap accessible, those types of things. So we're looking at our signage throughout the community and finding ways to improve that. And that's a project that we have set monies aside for in the fiscal year 2019 capital improvements plan. We have $10,000 in there as well to acquire a, it's, it's basically a camera to, in essence, TV our lines. And what I mean by TV our lines, looking at our stormwater infrastructure. For folks that are familiar with the check valve system and some of the challenges we've had on Boca Siaga, one of the challenges we have is being able to access those lines and effectively see what's going, what's going on. Is there things coming in from the outflow? Is it coming in from the inlet? Where are those obstructions occurring? So we are acquiring a camera to effectively go in the line and be able to give staff real-time updates as to what's going on so we could address those stormwater issues and we can utilize it for other things as well. Now, we don't have a, of course, the county handles the sewer side of the operations, but the stormwater side, that camera can be utilized to look at our stormwater infrastructure and give us information that we can make sure that we maintain track if there's any, you know, intrusion from any roots or if there's any punctures or any illegal connections, those types of things, we'll be able to see with the camera. So there's a lot of different things that are incorporated in the capital improvements plan, but right now, staff feels very comfortable with what we're putting forward. And one of the things that we as staff are going to make sure is that if we say we're going to do something in fiscal year 19, we're going to do it in fiscal year 19. One of the things that we want to get away from is continuously carrying projects on. We need to finish the projects before we start new projects. So we're going to make sure if it's a roadway project, we plan one year for design and engineering and the next year for construction. And so, you know, there will be better updates, better information. So you won't see that project that continues to make its way into the budget for three years. So we're going to monitor that and stay on top of that. So staff has put some work into the capital improvements plan. We're always looking to make some improvements. In subsequent budgets, we'll actually start rating these projects. So you'll see if it's a severe level one or two or three. And then what we'll do is provide pictures of exactly what we're talking about here. If we're talking about the camera to, to TV the lines, you'll actually be able to see the camera, the, you know, what the breakdown and description of that is. So you will understand from the board's perspective, but also from the residents' perspective, exactly what the monies that the city is requesting and the expenditures are in real time and get a good understanding for our project. So at this particular time, staff is ready to answer any questions. I have the finance director here to answer any questions from a funding perspective. But right now, the fiscal year 2019 capital improvements plan is fully funded. Subsequent years are not fully funded because we know that it's most likely going to take a bond issuance to address those roadway projects, Parsley and Marguerite. So staff stands prepared to answer any questions and is recommending approval.
I have a question.
Hmm?
The Military Court of Honor for $40,000, what improvement is there?
Okay, that particular project is a project that if you, on Tom Stewart Causeway to the right where the gazebo is, there's that little area that we were approached by the Boy Scouts about utilizing that area for a flag retirement pit. And so internally, we had the conversation about the possibility of crap, or creating a Military Court of Honor. So the Military Court of Honor, in essence, would be a five-point star with the U.S. flag planted in the center and each branch of the military with their flag on one of the corners of the star. It would be brick pavers. So in essence, we would sell the brick pavers to folks in the community that would want to have their bricks placed either on their, under their respective branch or under the U.S. flag. And then we, of course, since it has the flags there, we would light it. And that would, in essence, be our gathering place as a community for Memorial Day, Veterans Day, those types of things. And we thought that that is a real nice amenity to the park because it will complement the gazebo and also complement the 9/11 memorial we have there and in essence, change the dynamic of the park. And we had discussions internally at staff, you almost make it Patriot Park because you have such a welcoming feel when you are able to come off the Tom Stewart Causeway. You're going to see the 9/11 memorial and then you're going to see the Court of Honor. And I know that in my past experience, I've done this before, invariably, you get community support and in some cases, you get, you know, donors that help contribute to offset the cost. So one of the things that we're going to do is, once we move forward and we have the schematics and an actual sketch of what the design looks like, we're going to see if there's folks in the community that want to assist in, in essence, in sponsoring it or actually helping it come to life. So if we don't have to utilize the tax revenue to see it come to, to fruition, we're, we're going to, you know, definitely work with our community partners and talk with our, you know, veterans and having bay pines right down the street from us, that's certainly a benefit. And the monies that we've set aside for this particular project is from the BP's monies. It's not that we're utilizing, you know, ad valorem revenue, we're utilizing monies from that. So there, there's going to be more to come with that, but we thought that would just be a really nice addition to the park.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I would like to make one clarification just for the board so that you understand how the process will work from here on out. You get a view of the overall capital improvements plan, and these numbers are certain ones will go into the capital improvements element. So once this is finally approved, it'll come back to you in the form of a, an amendment to our capital improvements element. And each year, we will do that to update the five-year plan. The cap, the, the numbers that will end up in the capital improvement element, however, are only those that are $100,000 or more. So you won't see as detailed a budget when it comes back as an amendment. That's in accordance with the, the way the policy was adopted, policy 1.1.5 in your comp So what you need to do tonight is discuss it among you, take input from the vast public that's here, and then make a recommendation of approval or approval with amendments or denial, one way or the other. You need to make a recommendation to the city commission.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
And, and yes, it, it, as you may have remembered from your, the instructions I sent with this, I asked you to focus on the areas that were in blue. Those are not amendments, right? You knew that. The, which didn't want you to try to absorb the entire capital improvements element at once to deal with this one issue.
Right. Looks very well thought out and laying a good foundation for a fiscally sound future. Looks good, from one man's perspective, anyway.
All right, so we have no other comments. Anybody make a motion?
Make a point that you have opened it up for public comment.
Oh. Anybody open for public comment?
One at a time, please.
Anybody against it from the public? Okay.
Then you can close your public hearing portion.
All right, we can close the public hearing portion. And do we have anybody like to make a motion?
Make a motion when you accept that budget.
And that you recommend approval.
I recommend approval.
I'll second.
And can we go to the vote, Gwen?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Cliot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hearn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rappa?
Yes.
Second Vice Chair Wykoff?
Yes.
Chairman Noble?
Yes. Okay, and on to number five, old business. Nothing to discuss, anybody? Six, planning commission discussion, nothing. And then our next meeting will be September 10th, 2018, at 6:00 PM. And this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.